Call the meeting order, ladies and gentlemen. Those of you that have cell phones, please put them on vibrate so that the meeting is not disturbed. Second item is the minutes for January 21st. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as mailed?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Approval of the claims.
Move it.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Human Resources Department have the memorandum of personnel transactions. I will send it around for signatures and I also need a motion on that.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Receive county recorder's report for fees collected. Is there a motion to receive that report?
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Homeland Security. Michelle, you want to step up and give your report? Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yes, fine. Getting leaner every year.
Yeah. Because I work in the lean office. What I have for you today is a contract that I would request your approval to contract with CPK. They are sworn law enforcement officers from the Iowa Department of Public Safety and they put on a three-day interview and interrogation technique course. They've presented at our lean conferences, short versions of the course, and they're very well respected in the law enforcement community. We would like to host this training in O'Brien County. They've offered their facility and to take care of all the facility fees for the event, and we would like to fund up to 50 sworn law enforcement personnel to attend the training at a cost of $300 per student.
Move it.
Second.
Any discussion, questions of Michelle? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Very good.
I'll need three signatures for three different contracts and then I will mail those to the...
All right. Want to pick them up after the meeting?
If you want to just put them in my box.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six is to receive the county sheriff's division's second quarter report.
Second.
Discussion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Item seven, Communication Center, Glenn.
Good morning.
Morning Glenn.
Just a little background. Starcom had leased the tower space to Altel several years back, and Altel sold their network to AT&amp;T. This was on the West Starcom Tower out by West High. Since then, AT&amp;T purchased Long Lines Wireless, and they're going to continue to use the Long Lines Wireless Network on that West Tower, but no longer are going to be utilizing the old Altel network. So, they've determined that they no longer need the use of that radio shelter. It's a very well-built thermal bond-type shelter worth several thousand dollars. Best interest of Starcom, they've agreed to transfer ownership of that shelter to Starcom. We've had the city attorney and the county attorney, along with their attorneys, agree upon a written contract to transfer that to limit our liabilities. Right now, we're making a recommendation that we take ownership of that shelter for future use at Starcom.
Where is this ag bun?
It's west of the West High, up off of, I think it's West 22nd Street.
That's right adjacent to the tower?
Oh, it's right in the same compound, right within, inside the fenced area. What it'll do for us is if we have anyone else interested in leasing tower space, this will be a benefit that we can actually lease tower space and building.
So it has potential...
That's good.
Something happens to our facility and move equipment into that unit. It's air-conditioned, the grounding is up to specs.
That's good.
I move it.
I'd second.
Is there any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
We'll take it from our city council for their approval here in a week or so.
Okay, very good. Thanks Glenn. Okay, Board Administration, Dennis Butler, want to talk about our courthouse open hours and so on and so forth, please.
Okay, back on January 14th, the board was alerted by an employee of the courthouse here about certain individual or individuals who were in the courthouse before eight o'clock because we were opening courthouse from seven o'clock to eight o'clock. So, at that point in time, the board considered moving the time, then on January 15th, the board did move the time to seven fifty to four thirty. That is working with the exception, it's hard to move 62 people up and down the elevator in 10 minutes, as slow as our elevators are, to get them to their workstation. So, we went through and figured out how many key access cards or access devices, which would be a slide card, scan card, or a FOB. We do have enough on hand to give every employee that doesn't have, that works in the courthouse only, and that amount of divi- about 54, about 47 FOBs and cards we got to make up. Okay, so the proposal basically is to move it from eight o'clock to four thirty is when the courthouse would actually open. We're going to program the FOBs to work Monday through Friday, only between the hours of seven and eight. That way, they can get in the courthouse, and we have some employees actually come to work at seven thirty. I didn't realize that when we first did it, but doing more research, we found out we do have one or two to do that. It also gives employees to get in here when they can. They can't actually work before unless the officials say they can, because then you get involved with overtime and things like that, but at least they can get in the courthouse without fear of another person, other county employee in the courthouse before eight. We hope to have a FOB ready Friday and hand out to the people and it'll start next Monday.
And this is at no cost, really, because we have the FOB machine and the, I mean, and the cards and everything else, and this increases, or really, starting of our security system for the courthouse.
Right, and the state offices, I talked to Lisa McNeil, they're totally in favor of this. Most of the people do have FOBs, the clerk of court is the exception, and she'll get FOBs, she has enough FOBs to get everybody on the state offices embedded in this, so...
Good.
It's gonna, I think it's a good deal, it's part of, you know, a step toward courthouse security on Wednesday, seven will open at eight.
Right, right. Mark, did you have a comment? Munson, I thought you raised your hand.
I do. I know Dennis took the initiative to get some information and to put this together, and that was following, you know, the immediate response and the email that you sent out, which I thought was the appropriate thing to do because if you have someone alerting you of danger, sometimes you can't go through, and that, that's the process. You need just to take action immediately, make, and get those doors closed. Well, then, the next issue came up, so I know you worked on it this week, and it sounds great to me. Schools have been locked and teachers have been coming in and out with FOBs or cards for quite some time, so it's the right move.
Absolutely. I do too.
City hall works the same way. They open at eight, but the employees have a slide card or FOB to get in, but it shows we are listening to the people. The people, we have several really questions, how do I get to my workstation by eight o'clock? And by five after eight, where our system's set up, I think it's five after eight, or 10 after eight, something like that, then you get penalized. So, this will solve the problem all the way around.
Well, I think it's a good start, but we got two other buildings we need to start worrying about too.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because those doors get opened just as early, and people are wandering through those halls, so...
Right, absolutely.
We need to look into getting those other buildings done too.
Yep. And that's also, just one side note, if we do adopt a court security, this would knock one hour off of our total time, so it was seven, it was open at eight. If we did courthouse security, we wouldn't have to be here at seven, it'd be here at five to eight, or 10 to eight.
Mr. Chairman, what kind of action do you want on this?
Yes, I'll, I think, I think we'd need a motion to go ahead and adopt this process, you know, for the courthouse. Move it. One more comment. Pat?
Karen, we did this during elections, but sometimes our courts, we have to be there early before election, we could just program it along with the earlier, just for that day or other.
You can give them that flexibility. Okay, go on with your motion Larry.
Move it.
Is there a second?
I have a second. Second.
Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Also gave a memo to the general here, we'll get it reviewed via, so the public will know what's going on.
All right, very good. Thank you Dennis. Our next item is, I don't see Regina. I better head to schedule. Go to Mark.
Mark, chair.
Mark, sit here.
Our consultant is coming to present this, I don't have to, I wasn't doing it for you, so...
Oh, is that right? All right, well, we can, we can wait on the consultant. Go ahead.
As long as Laura is here, we're talking about the position over the courthouse office GIs position.
Right.
I think you received it through the budget process last week, but in order to move it forward, just wanted to make sure that Laura understands that we're okay with that, and we can start what we need in order to have this issue made from the city assessors office and the courthouse office GIs, but make sure that you are aware of that. Because we had seen a couple emails, and I thought we had more approval, but we're ready to get started, so that we can take it to the fore.
Right, I don't have any, I don't have a problem with that, I don't know if the rest of the board does. Right.
And then the other thing is just to make you aware that the study bill that is moving in committee down there, House Study Bill 508, is going to increase the expenses for the county, is that instead of just publishing, assessor publishing the equalization notice, they're going to, the county auditor is going to dispass, is going to have to mail that equalization notice to every parcel owner in the county. What occurred is down in Carol, Iowa, Fairwood, Rexford, and this day, the equalization order is increased, so they did appeal the equalization order and caused a huge increase in the county expenses, so the board, our legislature is now considering the order to send, force it to send those notices out to everybody.
What will that cost?
Yeah?
Yeah. It's another mandate.
Is that a, what will that cost, Pat?
We do it for...
An estimate.
...the rest is about fifteen thousand, you do that, and so...
Going to be somewhere in that neighborhood?
Yeah, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Wow.
Fifteen to twenty thousand.
Most issues going up to three cents.
They didn't give you any money to go with the mandate?
No.
Of course not. Dennis?
It also depends if they just do industrial or commercial, or if they do residential, because we have 60-some thousand parcels where you have to notify the property owner, so that's somewhat of our need to reserve, that's some, what we need to have a bigger reserve sometime, because if the bill passes, the balance come back for budget amendments, like what?
Yeah.
This is an exception, the budget amendments on legislation we only want to come through when we could and probably won't.
This is unanticipated expenses that we might have to...
The legislature doesn't know in time before we set our budgets, that's the problem, instead of March 15th, not able to affect the schools.
Regina's here.
All right. Thank you for filling that time, Pat.
Thank you.
Regina, would you, you're on the up right now, RML?
I hope I wasn't too late. I hope I didn't interfere with the schedule.
No, you're on time. We're a little bit ahead of schedule.
Okay, all right. Well, the reason I'm here today is for a proposed of changes to the Woodbury County Jail project that we've been working on. There are five items that are before you today, one of which, our consultant, HDR Architecture, is not recommending that it be approved. And so, the other, the other four items, the work has already been completed. It's been completed in what I deem a satisfactory capacity, and so these are the amounts for that work. Are there any questions?
Yes, could you go through them individually here, the integrated five panic switch controls? What does, what does that mean?
Okay, there are five existing switches, red, red buttons, so to speak, and those have been tied in to the controls. The original contract did not have that work included in it.
Okay, it did not have that included in it? The modified head and, what, but 60 additional cameras, add 31 days, what, what does that mean? That's $129,000.
Right, and that is the one that HDR Architects is not recommending be approved. That is a number to modify the control equipment to accommodate additional cameras in the future, so that's not a number that includes cameras or camera wiring, that's just a number to modify the existing equipment by that existing contractor. And HDR feels that that number is higher than it should be.
Okay, so we're not going to consider that one at all, so that's been taken out?
And item three, two additional monitors were requested for the security control equipment. One, my understanding, there was a failure of an existing monitor, so that was replaced with a new, and then also two, my understanding is they wanted a backup monitor, so that's the two monitors.
Larry, did you have a question?
Yes. Back up to the, where are we at with the cameras? Are they all installed and are they all working properly now?
The existing cameras and the additional cameras that were part of this...
Digital bed.
...bid, I have a report where one camera is not functioning currently, and so I've written that up in a report for, for the contractor's benefit to know that that needs to be corrected. Also, two, the recording equipment is not performing satisfactorily, so I've written up a report to the contractor about correcting that as well.
Now, is there a holdback on the funds on that?
There is. In fact, I received a pay request, I believe, at the end of last week, and I've reduced the amount of the pay request for the work that we've just talked about, for the, the security controls contractor. That will not be included in the next pay request, they will not be receiving funds.
Is everything completed now with the exception of getting the cameras working?
I have made a punch list, and my understanding is that the contractor has been working towards completing that list of items, and the items that I am aware of, I've written a report as of the 22nd, and so the contractor will be responsible for completing those items on that final list of review items.
Prior to getting paid.
Right, prior to final payment, that's right.
I have one other question. You're referring this to phase one. This is the only phase that we're doing, so it's...
There's not a phase two, or phase three, or phase four? We only talk...
There is a phase two, three, and four that the architect put together from Chicago and Texas. So, this was phase one in terms of the big picture, and we only funded phase one.
Right, and what he put together has never even been brought before the board, the two, three, and four.
The other phases, we have not discussed that.
Right now, I don't think there's any sentiment on the board, there's not any money to continue with the...
Well, help clear this up. We are at our $1.2 million threshold though, so any more phases, that's still the same project?
Well...
That's my, there's different projects?
It would be different projects.
But they would all be considered part of this, so legally, we can't even do it.
Without a vote of the people, that's what I'm asking.
It would have to go to a referendum.
Right, right, because they extend more than that 1.2 million, so we'd have to have the vote of the citizenry to, to get into those other phases.
And I think we understand that phase two has not even begun, because we do not have any direction from the board to begin phase two. The phases that Mr. Munson was referring to was the big picture ideas and how we could break it down into more feasible projects for the county.
And those phases are going to change over time based on, on length of time and also cost of, of developing it too, and if we have to bring this to, as a referendum to the citizenry to do it, that's, that's going to be quite a process to go through.
I do know your committee keeps, tries to keep on, on top of that to make sure that, you know, we are defining it correctly as one project or several projects. I know Dennis, you've had a few phone calls with the state auditor to make sure that we are, you know, within our legal means of, you know, we just don't want to break the law or try to slide something by, but at the same time, do what we need to do to...
Absolutely.
...get you out too.
Well, this is the first, Dennis, you have a contribution?
Back to the cameras, the real life can't do the $129, which cameras not recommended, but also in our last meeting, we did a discussion of placing what money we had left potentially into other cameras to do as many as we could in certain areas in the jail or holding cells or whatever. Where are we with that? I thought we're understanding, we're going to come back with a bid or a price and see what's going to cost. Are we, that's two or three weeks ago? Where are we at with that?
And currently, this item came in, item number two, with the modifications of the head-end controls.
That is included in that?
That's it.
That's, that is trying to see if the existing contractor under the existing warranty would give us a fair price. And HDR feels like it's time to bid out the work to a qualified contractor. And one of the things here, the note, it says that this item has not been approved by the HDR jail consultant. The jail consultant recommends bidding the work to a Bosch certified installer after the current project close out. So, so where this camera project is at, is our consultant is recommending that we wait until this project is finalized with final payment, make sure the work is satisfactory, and the contractor is paid complete, and then begin bidding out the work for the Bosch system.
Right, but there's no money left, my understanding.
My understanding is that there is some money left, we're still in our 1.2 million.
When we had our meetings, we had enough money to do a certain dollar amount. Problem is, we put the wiring in, buy the cameras and everything, it was going to exceed that amount, so that's when we did some discussion going back to maybe just doing a certain area in the jail, and it's following the bidding threshold, but you got to make the work with what's in there already, because they're soft. But that's what I thought we left with, and she's going to come back with a price or how much it costs just to do a certain sales.
Once we're satisfied with the completion of this existing project, though.
That's what's being recommended at this time.
I would move to approve the change order with the exclusion of item number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there some further discussion? I need to know, what is this, provide two additional Bosch monitors? What are those?
Okay, that was, that was, we had one failure of a monitor, and then we wanted a backup or an extra in case of further failures of these touchscreen monitors, so that's the two, the two control monitors.
And number four, the DVR and matrix change?
There is a supplement to your attachments, and I believe it is number, number 15, and I wish I could describe to you what that all meant.
I don't understand it either.
Yeah.
I see it here.
Yeah, and so I've, I've shown that to the HDR consultant, the HDR consultant felt comfortable approving this item. And so, if, if you have questions, I could carry that back to the consultant regarding the matrix. I, I'm not experienced with that language. Matrix does not mean anything to me, it's a movie, and I don't think that's what they're talking about here.
Because it talks about four-by-four metroplex viewing secondary systems and all of that, I, I don't know what that means or where they're located and what effect that's going to have, you know, on the security of the jail. What does that mean?
That was, they want to be able to have control in both secondary and primary, and that was a method of doing that exchange.
Okay.
So, each of those secondary, well, the secondary and primary would be able to see all the monitors.
I do remember that conversation, yeah.
Okay. And lastly, additional audio paging speaker and intercom systems. Why would we need additional ones? Was that, was that an add-on that was forgotten about, or?
It was. The, the original documents did not show every single speaker and every single intercom, particularly in the closets or in areas that are not commonly gone into, and, and the contractor, when they did their field verification, they did not come across these speakers, but in the best interest of the county, there were 13 of them, this is the time to replace those. So, this is in addition to what was originally in the contract. So, these, these 13 speakers were never accounted for in the original contract amount.
That answers my question. So, we're looking at a total cost here of, of $9,000 for these, $9,282?
Correct. Let me kind of walk you through that. So, the total of those four items that we're recommending for approval is the $13,700.
Right.
And we do have some contingency allowance left in the amount of about 400, or 4,000. So, we reduce that change order amount to $9,282, and so that's the, the, the change there. So, the original contract amount in six, for $688,000 would be increased by that $9,000, so that total at the bottom would be the new contract sum amount.
$697,893?
Correct, yes, mhm.
Dennis, where are we going to get the additional funds if we don't, if we use the...
We have money left installed at 1.2 million, that's part of considering the extra cameras, and then this will cover. One question, we increased the overall price $9,282, I'm assuming our contact base will stay the same even though we're increasing the contract?
That is correct, there's no increase to the fee here.
That's a good assumption then, good.
Just assuming.
All right.
We would, of course, show you that increase if there was one.
Good. Okay, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Same.
Thank you for your time today.
You're welcome. Thank you Regina. Let's move on to item number 10, which is secondary roads.
This is actually Orton Slough Drainage District, but I'm a dressler from INS Group is here to present this with the discussion and concerns that we had on water quality issues for the outlet of the Orton Slough going into Brown's Lake. It was approached by a landowner at the end of the meeting who was interested in maybe improving an existing wetland area to provide some of that detention, and I was going to present some information on a possible grant that might be available to the board for paying for this improvement.
Okay, good. Go ahead, Adam.
Okay. The Watershed Improvement Review Board is run, a board at IDALs, Iowa Department of Agriculture and Land Stewardship, and that board was established in 2005. Under that program, they do have a grant program, and part of the grant eligible applicants are counties as a government entity to, for projects like agricultural runoff and drainage, to address sediment loads, water quality, nutrient loading and stuff from this. As Mark mentioned, at the informal hearing we had on the Orton Slough, again, the landowners down, or the property owners around the Browns Lake are very concerned about any additional flows coming into Browns Lake from the Orton Drainage District. The, the Drainage District project itself, I think, is very well-received by the landowners. Basically, they have a very inadequate outlet, the existing tile system that's there, and out of the options that were presented, and the most cost feasible one is an open channel. And that open channel, besides addressing agricultural needs, would also provide stormwater... And that open channel, besides addressing agricultural needs, would also provide stormwater capabilities for any developments. And there's talking about commercial developments along, what is the county?
Liberty Park.
Liberty Park in that area. So there would be a lot of benefits to the fact of using an open channel. Well, the open channel basically comes with that as an idea that we're going to deliver a lot more sediment down to Browns Lake. The WERB grant process, you know, for water quality, the, on the map that was provided in your packet also, the area we're talking about, there's about 2,300 acres out of the Orton Slough area that basically currently comes to this property up here at the top end, and a 20 acre parcel that the existing outlet comes into. The other blue line shows you the proposed open ditch system that would be the most cost effective one. But to utilize this land up here as, and to enhance it for water quality purposes, we would be looking to put in for this WERB grant through IDALs and enhancing this by improving the detention capacity in it to settle solids out before they would be discharged into the lake. The other, over half of the watershed is the drainage from over 1,100 acres comes down through an existing surface channel into this area. And developing that into a vegetated, maintained vegetated grass waterway would be an additional application there or a practice that would also help settle out solids. In addition, a third option that could be built into this system is undercutting the channel and using riprap barriers periodically down the channel to increase trap efficiency for additional solids that are being delivered to the system. Actually, you know, those could be being delivered from the adjacent watershed and also any additional industrial development area or commercial area that would be delivering into the ditch.
Does that add to the cost? Does that add to the cost, Ivan, if you do that when you add those additional riprap barriers in there?
Yes, there would be, you know, obviously additional cost into the channel system. Enhancing this would be an additional cost. Converting the existing little ditch into a grass waterway would have some additional costs. One of the approaches to looking at this would be to apply through the WERB grant to basically cover those costs. Each applicant is eligible up to $300,000 through the WERB grants for these water quality improvements. And one of the things that, in the rating scale for these practices is, is the water that you're trying to protect on the impaired water quality list for the state of Iowa. And Browns Lake is on that list, the three, what they call the 303 list. And so your app, we feel that your application would be well received. And as you know, the state of Iowa is currently under the nutrient reduction strategy, also targeting nutrient reduction as part of this. Anytime that you can trap sediment off agricultural ground, you're going to be addressing phosphorus because most of the phosphorus is attached to the soil particles. So the, what we are suggesting would be is that the county, potentially separate on behalf of the district, but the landowners in the district, we would recommend, have not been told about a cost of an application or anything. So what we would be suggesting is the county pay for the cost of putting together the application, and then we would include a discussion of that application as part of our report on the Orton Slough. And that these practices would be, you know, discussed in the report. So then, if you're successful, the money that the county basically would be used to offset the overall cost to the district for basically this enhanced wetland, the trap efficiencies down the channel in the grass waterway. The application cutoff date is February 28th. So it's one month. We have to put a lot of materials together over the next four weeks if we're going to be successful with this. In addition, we need to also further make sure that we have upfront discussions with the landowner of the 20 acres. He indicated after the hearing that he was willing to consider selling that property. Long-term maintenance for this, we feel would be, it should come into the district as the district would actually own the property and maintain it. But again, obviously, 20 acres is going to be a significant cost. If the grant could basically offset that, you know, the landowners in the district are going to be much more supportive of this if we can go down this road. We would win a lot of good PR with the landowners around Browns Lake. Obviously, everybody's interested in maintaining the water quality. And I think this, you know, project would bring a lot of vested interest from those people along in the support that we have from the Drainage District. If the board, INS has worked with different communities for WERB applications, this would be our first true completely agricultural type application. But the, over the last year, the board has, the Water Quality Board has really started focusing some interest towards using some of this money also into the agricultural sector. I think we would have a very good chance at this. What I would suggest to the board would be, we would propose a lump sum agreement with the county to prepare the application. We feel like it would be good from the county side of it that because the landowners have not been informed of this, that basically that'd be paid out of some other source of funding to get the application process going. And then again, what we can do in the report and the public hearing we have of the landowners, be able to educate them as to what the process is and that they would end up basically having the long-term maintenance of these facilities as part of their district.
Ivan, what's the estimated cost to put an application together like that? I guess that's going to be the?
We would propose a $5,000 fee. And we were expecting that with this involving both private landowners and getting his, it may take more than that, but we're willing to, in the support of this project to move it forward, we would be propose a $5,000 lump sum fee with you.
Okay. Larry, do you have?
You said a February 28th or something cutoff date. What is that cutoff date? Is that for this year or?
Yes. They, your application stays on file. They review these, I believe they review twice a year in regard to funding. They have allocations of funds, I think, twice a year for this. But this is their 2014 application deadline is February 28th.
Are you going to be able to put everything together in that length of time?
That's what we're committing to you would be, is that we will get this put together and submit it by the 28th.
And that money would be used to buy this ground?
The, if you're successful, the money could be used to buy it. If we, on the 20 acre side of things, if the total cost is under, successful at the 300,000, you know, we may have some monies to be able to use for also the enhancements in the channel for the riprap. So between construction and land acquisition, the money is, the money is usable for both of those.
Other questions?
I just don't see where, how this can be tied up, put together in the length of time you're talking about. You've got to go back to the landowners.
The application process would not, you know, we would be able to proceed with the application without going to the landowners because the funding of the dollar amount would be basically, the dollar amount would not be in a direct expenditure that you would be approving to, you know, that would be a cost back to the landowners at this time. The, in the engineer's report on the overall project, we would include the discussion of these practices, how it's tied into their district, and there would be a public hearing on that engineer's report, and the landowners would have objection rights at that time to that aspect.
Well, yeah, all you're doing, Ivan, is presenting to us another resource as an application grant to, let's say, take away some of the initial costs of this project and wetlands opportunities to not let that water or, and the sediments, go into Browns Lake. And you say, you're saying you can get that application together in this deadline period between now and February 28th?
That's correct.
And also present this to the landowners down here and says, this is what we can do to prevent, you know, the runoff into Browns Lake and to preserve, you know, that area down there. I guess my next question is, do you have money in your budget, Mark, to pay the $5,000 amount? Or where would we?
Looking at that.
You're looking at Dennis for that?
This is a secondary road budget issue. I mean, we can't expend secondary road funds on a drainage district project. But I guess, just to frame what Ivan was talking about here a little bit before I go into funding or give Dennis a chance to see if he's got a fund where we could draw $5,000 for it. The biggest end of comments I've received since we had our Drainage District meeting have been from Browns Lake area residents concerned about sediment and the open ditch option. I've had four residents down there who have called and expressed concerns. And one of the things I've discussed here, since Ivan brought this forward, is the possibility of us being able to maybe construct some detention as part of the project to allow that sediment to settle out. DNR has some concerns as well. I spoke with Doug Chaffa, who's there, basically the land manager for this region of the state going down in Monona County and through the western part of Woodbury. And he was familiar with this grant program as well and felt it would go a long way to addressing some of their water quality issues that they have down there at the lake.
Mark, clarification, DNR had some concerns about the drainage into Browns Lake? Is that?
They were contacted by a couple of the landowners. And while they've spoken with the district office at a higher level about permitting, now they're talking to the land management people. And he did have some concerns about an open ditch directly into the lake without some kind of control structure at the outlet. And, you know, the fact that we're considering putting in some detention to help settle out some of the potential chemical and soil carried along with the water was something that they thought would go a long way to, you know, actually making this a project that would be an improvement to the lake as well as an improvement.
Right. I, you know, I attended that informal meeting, and I do agree with the information we've been given. There were concerns about drainage into Browns Lake, and this is just a great, I think, idea to come back to try to apply for this grant to do some mitigation of that because it is going to drain faster and it's going to carry more stuff with it from the land. So I would approve or move to figure out wherever Dennis says it, take $5,000 and apply for the grant.
Second.
There's a second.
I would, why do I think this 20 acres is in the flood plain?
Pardon?
Is the 20 acres in the flood plain?
I don't believe that it's in the flood. It is in the wetland conservation, soil conservation program already.
Oh, it is.
And what we would be doing is enhancing its ability to hold water. Again, it's really at the head of whatever design we utilize out there. Just as the intake is now on that 20 acre parcel, everything we connect in the future, whether it's open ditch or a tile system to carry the water, would be in the same areas. So he was the property owner who actually approached Ivan after the meeting as well with an interest in helping the district that way.
And I think it's a good thing. I mean, those are two, Browns Lake is important to us and also Snyder's been. And to me, we've got to protect those lakes down there. Dennis, you have a?
I'd recommend local auction sales tax for reasons that improving the Orton Slough drainage out there with open ditch, it will enhance economic development down there. So it's money well worth spent on local auction sales tax to fund this.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I still, I'm all for the project. I just have concerns about the timeline and what the cost is going to be to those landowners when this all is said and done because they're the ones that have to vote for it because they're the ones that are going to pay for it.
So if we, the grant's separate from what the project's going to cost, and they're agreeable to the cost?
Well, the grants, if the grant covers everything, there's not a problem.
No, no.
No, I know that. So that any additional costs are going to go to those landowners.
And they're aware of that.
What they have seen, what they have seen are estimates for an open ditch design, a single pipe, a single tile design that would carry the water away and basically replace the 20 inch tile out there. And then a second tile to partner with that 20 inch. That's the three options that they've got out there that they're looking at. The range in cost is from around 450,000 to about 690,000 to the district.
Above this grant?
Above this.
Above this grant, yeah.
Yes. But this grant would provide money to do some of those water quality enhancements. Without this grant, those costs would be pushed on to the district. If we were successful in obtaining this grant and with it being an impaired water, there is an opportunity for, well, I believe we qualify for it. It's a matter whether the board would choose this project.
Yes, I mean, they will actually, you know, rate different applications depending on how many applications come in there. They'll go through a process to determine which ones, and they may partially fund different To speak to the concerns there, the board, or the landowners would have the right to refuse to cover additional costs of that aspect to the project, you know, additional costs of the water quality. However, building this in with the open ditch process, which is already, you know, pushing $250,000 less than a closed conduit, will, the landowners also want to, you know, be good neighbors and not be dumping additional sediment? I believe they would be able to win, will be able to win that support through the hearing process with the landowners. So if you've made the application, the funding came through, and the project died because of lack of support from the landowners in the district, basically, you would just basically not be accepting the actual grant, the award of the grant. You would basically turn that money away, or maybe we could downsize the overall project aspect and utilize the money yet for some additional improvement there.
So to address Larry's concern, you really only need to make contact with that one landowner and discuss this proposal, perhaps assure his support at this one time. You don't actually have to go out there and get any kind of a signed purchase agreement for the land.
That's correct.
All right. The other thing is, will the Drainage District accept that 20 acres into their liability because they would have to maintain it at once they have?
That will be covered in the public hearing, and the landowners would have the right to object to that or remonstrance right. But I do not believe that that's going to be a strong issue. The landowners want to get their drainage improved. They need this outlet improved. They also know that the state is very much they also know that the state is very much targeting agricultural runoff as a place to do improvements. So, um, you know, we've already expressed in the informal hearing process that, you know, the landowners should be considering their own conservation practices upstream in this location, you know, to help enhance, uh, reduction of sediment runoff from their properties. Um, you know, truthfully, this ground's so flat.
It is.
It's, uh, you know, the, the open ditch will provide the opportunity for improvements further upstream into the system. The tile system would not give you the same opportunity for those future improvements. Uh, if we are successful in winning the grant, I think finding support from the landowners that a grant's covering a portion of this cost, this is the opportune time, as long as their overall costs do not exceed the tile outlet improvements, um, I think we're going to be very successful in getting support of the landowners.
Is, is this a decision the board and trustees makes for the district? I, I guess that kind of gets to a little bit earlier, his question is, they'll hear the comments from the landowners, and then ultimately they'll decide whether-
Yeah, with the trustees and the-
Right.
Right.
I guess that's the thing, I want to answer your question directly, is ultimately that decision of whether this 20 acres becomes part of the board and property will be-
Their, this, it would be your decision, that's correct. And it, it could be, as we move forward, too, you know, if the county itself wished to, through, you know, their conservation board, have control and maintain, you know, separate from the district, that would be a second option.
Okay, all right, okay, there has been discussion. Uh, the other item was to approval of the application, and there was a motion made for that, uh, for that possibility. Uh, any further discussion, ladies and gentlemen?
Does that motion include a payment out of local auction sales tax?
Yeah, it's the question I tried to see what you were running.
Yeah, we've had a discussion.
B or B?
We're on B, because we've had a discussion, and on the grant, wetlands mitigation on Horton Slough, and, uh, then there was a motion made.
All right.
Okay.
And that was, was that for $5,000, Mark?
$5,000, I have a long line.
The sales tax, yeah.
That's correct, Mark. That's what I understand, yes.
Mark made the second, and, and Jackie made the, made the motion. All right, any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same as aye. I think this is going to be a win-win for everybody.
I, I feel that way, too.
I really do, thank you, Ivan.
Thank you.
And also, Mark.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At one point, I think, Mark had said that the hearing would probably come in February, because this grant would bump that back there.
Um, that was an ambitious schedule, I think we're looking a little closer to April at this point.
But the application's definitely going to be made prior to the deadline date. Okay, all right, good. Thank you, a little behind schedule now, but that's all right, good discussion. Um, hearing of any individual wishing to make a presentation on the agenda, not on the agenda? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move on to, uh, to budget items. Um, we have, uh, we'll be looking first at the juvenile detention budget. Um, I see Mark Olson is here, or do we need to take a little break?
I think we have five minutes.
Let's take a little five-minute recess before we get into it, and then we'll come back to it, ladies and gentlemen. Jordan, let's go home. It's going to be time to, uh-huh? Oh, my goodness, today? Wow, read this. Yeah.
They shot somebody, grew up in the hospital, how many officers got shot during the war?
Morning.
Hey, shows them I went to. That's that homicide happened, the street, yeah. Yeah, the serving officer, somebody regarding the homicide out there on South Island, my Easter, and somebody got shot. They say it was an officer, a serving officer, interesting.
Supervisor. Insurance. Here we go. It's county.
Where are you talking?
It's going to, it's going to affect the entire county, Larry, I don't have any problem with that. I don't. What's that? Yes, I did do that, and there was no one, no one stepped up. Uh, let's resume the meeting, ladies and gentlemen, we have the, uh, juvenile detention, uh, first on our agenda to look at their, uh, their budget. Um, we're looking at right now the juvenile detention facility, and it's on page under General Supplement, uh, pages 17 and 18. Um, Mark, do you have any, uh, comments relative, before we start in on this budget?
We, I can go over the revenue that we made last year.
Okay. Now, the, where's that, what line item is that, is that show up?
I'm just updating you.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
And the money that goes in the general fund, you're-
Right, right. Not, it doesn't come to me, Larry, believe me. State reimbursement for care of juveniles, uh, we received $95,619.
$619?
Yes. For a school lunch program, we received $22,000. For the G, GPS reimbursement from the state back to the county, we received $21,000. For, uh, BIA, Bureau of Indian Affairs, we received $162,400. And from Dakota County, we received $51,400.
How much?
$51,400, for a total revenue of $352,919.
Is that for the current year so far, or that last year?
That was last year.
Okay.
What was that amount again? What was that amount?
Oh, the total one?
$352,919?
Yes, yes.
And, and are we still, are we still under the contracts with the, uh-
Ask me.
With the BIA?
Oh, yes, we are, with Dakota County also.
Uh, GPS thing?
GPS, we have that state reimbursement continuing with the juvenile court services.
And the school lunch program, we, we still collaborate?
Right.
And receive income from that. What about, I thought we had a contract with, uh-
Union County, we just haven't received any, uh-
Students from there?
No.
What about, I thought we had a, uh, one with, with Dakota County.
Yes, and that is the $51,000.
Oh, okay, I, I'm sorry. Dennis?
For next year's budget on revenues, we have $192,500 budget for revenues coming in. We get $352,400 last year, is there a potential that $192,000 could be increased?
Oh, yeah, because what, it depends on how much.
That's what was turned in, so we need to get new numbers put in there, because if we increase it, that reduces our tax asking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, part of that's going to be like the BIA, the GPS, the Dakota County.
You got all that listed here.
So just so you know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we need to revise our next year's numbers, I'll get to you after this week.
Okay, no problem.
Okay. Are any concerns on this, page 17? It looks like you held things kind of, uh, same on this, on this page.
On food?
Yes.
Spent $50,000 year-to-date, and that's the population way down.
Well, right, and when I, when I proposed this, this is when we were running at 80% capacity, and the last quarter, it dipped, especially with the weather now in January, we dipped. Um, so, I, I think we could cut that back $10,000 and go back to our normal $75,000.
Thank you, sir.
I made it easy, didn't I?
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to be easy, Jackie, believe me.
In employee mileage, you just don't use it.
I use it when, um, last year, we didn't have a whole lot of, of things going in the state as far as detention issues, that's when I usually use it, when I'm going to and from Des Moines.
What line item is that, Larry?
Uh, forty, with this light.
Forty-one thirty.
Forty-one thirty.
Second from the bottom.
I'd say we need to cut that.
We don't want to be looking and taking $500 out of the budget.
Yeah, I agree.
For your mileage?
Mm-hmm.
You agree with that, Mark?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, thirty-five twenty, I suppose one trip's worth 1,100 bucks, is that about it?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Ambulance.
Yeah, um, actually, we just spent $800 on ambulance, so that, you just don't know when that's going to happen. I mean, I could go a whole year, or I could have three in one year.
How many part-time employees do you have?
I believe I have 12.
Any other items on here?
Forty-two twenty-nine. You got-
What is that?
Uh, School of Instruction.
Okay, what I have that extra money in, it's I need to do another training for my staff as far as physical restraint training. Um, and you use, we usually go through WIT or another program, which ends up costing us money when I have to train, uh, 27 employees, uh, how to, how to, because we can't use, like, pressure points, um, so we have to use specific type of training.
Be looking, eighty, $100 an employee for that training, or?
We had training once before, and I had, I sent him in two different, and it came to, well, he would have charged me $2,000, but he ended up charging me $1,000 for that.
I'd like to leave that in there, I think training's important, particularly nowadays with, uh, the kinds of youngsters that you're getting into a facility like this.
I have a question, you have a telephone expense and a cellphone expense?
Telephone, a cellphone expense, of course, is for what we carry. The telephone expense, I believe, would be for what we, for the lines that we have coming into detention. Those would be your hard-wired phones.
Okay, any other concerns on this?
I, I just have a question, on 4506 GPS tracking.
Yes.
That's one.
Um, but there's also on page 26, there's a GPS tracker, so you, I was trying to figure out-
There's two diff-, yeah, the GPS tracking would be the, the bracelets that were the county is, is the upfront cost, and then we're reimbursed back by the state for the actual use of the bracelets.
So that's 4506 GPS tracking, that's where we're reimbursed $22,000 or whatever?
Yes, yes.
And that's reimbursed by the state?
Yes, it is.
And which, which number is that in, uh, no, in the, in the revenue part that you're doing?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, that is $21,000.
Should then, that expenditure be $21,000?
I agree.
On, uh, 4506?
Yeah.
Well, part of that is, um, we have 10 bracelets, nine of them we're automatically charged for, because those are, we have a 10th bracelet that we only get charged for if we use it. So that's a cost out there that I can't, whether we use it or not, you know, I'm not sure, but, um, we could definitely go with $21,000.
I just didn't know if we should over, budget more than what you get back.
That's fine.
Okay.
Dennis?
Line on 4261.
Just a minute, now, did we cut, did we cut, uh, GPS tracking by?
By $2,000.
$2,000?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
So then, on page, I'm jumping just for 26, then that's the person, that's a-
That's the GPS tracker, yes.
Okay, what is 4261?
Larry, you had another concern?
No, I'm fine.
Okay, Jackie. Dennis?
He's, Dennis is-
Oh, you got, you had it.
4261.
4261.
Back in fiscal year 12, that was $18,000, that was really high because there were expenses-
What, what are we talking?
The Juvenile Detention Emergency Services?
Okay.
Two years ago was high in fiscal year 12, because there were expenses being paid out there, that really shouldn't have been paid out of there.
Right.
Fiscal year 13, I had $33.40, we spent $45.67 this year, can we reduce that?
We could go to $9,000.
What is that for?
That's for emergency, like, if for clothing, it could be for medication, for glasses, it's emergency, community emergency money.
$3,000?
$3,000, okay.
Then the other one was 4420, two years ago I spent $35.59, $18.15 this year, I spent $17.85, is that a one-time shot, or is there more, can that be reduced?
What line item is that?
Equipment maintenance.
4220, equipment maintenance.
Well, yeah, we can cut that, but here's the problem with that, is I could have something go down, and it could be something that continues to break down, and that's where your costs are. I mean, we can project it and, and run short.
I can live with what he's got, Jackie, too.
Any other discussion on this? Sure.
Um, how much do you charge Dakota and Union Counties per juvenile per day?
$100 per day.
$100 per day?
Yes.
What are your actual operating costs per student per day?
I'd have to, Jackie, I don't know, if that's something I can tell.
Okay, because I, you know, if you're running at full capacity, which is what, 22, 22?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I think I read the numbers at 22, and your $120 budget would actually come out to be about $220 per juvenile per day, and that's, that's at max capacity, so if you have a lower capacity, obviously your costs are high. So I'm wondering, is the county getting enough money from these other counties to actually house juveniles in our facility?
Well, I think what was looked at, at the time that the rates were set, and that's been four or five years ago, is, uh, the competition for Cherokee was, at that time, 120?
Yeah.
Something like that. Uh, and in order to make sure to have a revenue generator for juvenile detention, we wanted to be competitive, and we're, proximity makes it, uh, cheaper for me, sort of the daily rate. Now, if rates have gone up, I don't know.
And there's really no, there was really no, uh, thought at that time either for us to, uh, you know, we're not subsidizing, but, you know, for, for those, for those contracts to pick up the total cost of, of our students in the, in the facility. Uh, we were looking at generation of income.
Yeah.
But, oh, yeah, year over year, your, you know, wages go up and everything like that, it should be maybe time to actually look at some of these contracts.
Yeah, and-
Or getting appropriate-
Right, and I think there probably will be a reevaluation of that, James, to, uh, readdress that with maybe the people that we're, uh, got contracts set with, like Dakota County and, uh, the, uh, BIA, um, and, and, yeah, and, and we can reevaluate that.
Another question, too, um, you used to get weekly numbers of the amount of juveniles in that facility, we really haven't been getting weekly numbers, like we do with the jails.
We still get those. We still get those numbers, you, you still send us those numbers, I, I, I think they're on our-
We didn't get them this week, I don't worry.
No, I think we missed them.
There's several weeks, is what he's saying, is we need to-
We've been getting it.
I can tell you by quarters over half, James, that's what we're getting.
Where are we today? Just, I know it's a random day, we're in the-
I think we're 12 today.
We're at 12, how many of our Lurie County residents?
I think two, and then on last Saturday, we have 10, we had 10 BIA units referred, so I, I see that.
Yeah, I think it's what I always like to do.
Yeah.
Is there any thought of maybe relooking at how we deliver this service? I mean, honestly, only two today are liberated, and that's a great number to see, you know, juveniles aren't getting in trouble, which is positive. But we need to really consider our operating costs for this department versus whatever options could be out there, if our numbers are incredibly low in the house, and especially if we're only getting $100 per day for those outside students. If you're going to do something in the planning in the future, this should really be something we look at.
Yeah, I think that, you know, it's something that we, we can reevaluate over time, and, uh, the time probably is, uh, within the next, you know, fiscal year to do that. Uh, I, you know, we, we do need a, a juvenile detention facility, for that matter. Um, we're operating, I think, the facility pretty efficiently at this point in time.
Well, if you look at the first 39 weeks, we ran at 80% capacity. Well, if you look at the first thirty-nine weeks, we ran at eighty percent capacity.
Yeah, and, and there's gonna be, there's gonna be fluctuations, and there's been some other things that's taken place this, uh, last fiscal year in working with, uh, other agencies, particularly the Sioux City School District and, uh, other agencies in the community that has, that's keeping our numbers down. We're not getting as many referrals from, uh, the educational system as we did a couple, three years ago because we've signed, uh, uh, contracts not only with the county, with the school system, with law enforcement, and how those youngsters are gonna be, uh, uh, put in the, uh, our judicial system. Uh, so there's been a lot of diversionary things that's happened to keep that population down, which, which is good.
But we're still spending, you know, a million a year with less numbers.
Right, right.
What's the state standards for?
I'm sorry, Dave.
State standards for an employee to a juvenile? Do you have state standards?
One to five.
One to five?
Yeah.
And how many do you have there in there today?
Right now, we have twelve.
How many employees are working today?
We have four on right now.
Okay.
Okay, any other?
Yeah, I got, I got one here, um, thirty-sixty, prescription medications.
Yes.
Um, we are not using that, why we use eighty-six hundred to be on me, back in twelve, but it's not happening anymore.
Uh, the reason for that, Mark, is right now, uh, parents are bringing in that medication, otherwise we would have to go out and buy that medication, so we've been very fortunate that parents are supplying medication to us, but at any time they could say, no, we're not bringing medication, and that's.
So we can reduce that?
Yeah, we can, we can sure do that. We could go five thousand?
Reduce it by five thousand?
No.
So we wanna reduce it by?
Two thousand.
Two thousand dollars?
All right, now then you go to the next line item, thirty-two forty, uh, personal items and clothing, which you just told me that was what comes out of the emergency services.
No, those are two different things, Mark, the clothing would be detention, it, it's just specifically detention shoes, um, it would be, um, clothing, socks, underwear, the other one is, is the emergency fund.
Okay. Any other concerns?
Uh, what are we spending those emergency funds on?
Uh, glasses, medication, clothing.
Whoa, whoa, medication?
No, no, for the kids, not for staff, you don't use that medication. So like if, if, uh, the child doesn't have insurance, um, or the family doesn't have insurance and they need emergency medication, we would pay a, a one-time medication. If they need glasses, we would help them pick up glasses, or, uh, support family that doesn't have enough money to go buy clothing, or coats, or socks, or whatever, we would, we would help purchase those.
Now, the rub with that is most of those people don't belong to Woodbury County.
No, that's not true.
So are we getting reimbursed from the other counties if we're buying stuff for them?
Well, we're not buying for other counties, it's what, this is Woodbury County.
Just Woodbury County?
Yes, yes.
Well, in defense of that, uh, I know that you have families that you hold youngsters for that, uh, either are abusing their meds or, uh, and don't come in with meds, um, uh, clothing situations are.
Bomb or clothing, especially with.
Are really bad, these kids come in with, 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 with no, um, change of clothes, they're filthy.
Dirty.
You go to their homes and, uh, you'll find that same situation there, uh, so I know what you're, you're saying, because I see it, I see it all the time. Any other questions on this budget?
Well, so just, so the emergencies maybe once they're out of JD, maybe just kind of get them.
A lot of them are kids that have either been through JD and are out in the community again, it could be, uh, families that are in state of an emergency right away and they'll go to like the intake department and ask for help.
What percentage of your kids come in that are on meds today?
Oh, probably eighty percent on a, on a regular basis are on some type of med.
Right. It's amazing. Any other questions? I'd move, we receive this budget with the.
Seventy-eight thousand five hundred worth of cuts, and also review the revenues, I think we gained seventy-five hundred thousand.
Right.
Yes.
So I'll get with them, now I'll help reduce taxes. Just to clarify again, is we gonna put those revenues on those sheets then, or like are they different sheets? It'll be on those sheets that we have in the budget. So it'll just show the offset, the actual. Right, it'll be additional revenue instead of cuts, it'll be revenues offset. So you have two folder, you have cuts and you have revenue.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second, and actually, it's just, if you didn't do that and go to reserve, but this way you can go to reduce, reduce taxes.
Right.
I could, I even have to put it on, put it in there so we can.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Let's move on to, uh, mental, uh, health, and that's page, uh, twenty-four.
I'd move, I'm receiving them.
Okay, there's a motion to receive that budget.
The last one?
No, this one, mental health.
Mental health.
This has, uh, information with the new contract, uh, the centralized intake department is under the, their rights and privileges and they are able to have overtime, and so I put in five hundred dollars of overtime.
Is there a second?
Wait a second, so you put it in, it's not showing?
It's not in there?
I just put, I.
You just put it in?
Yes.
Okay, can I ask another question, I'm gonna get back to the cellphone again. The cellphone on the original JD facility?
Yes.
Do you pay for everybody's cellphone out of that?
No, there has to be, each, each one has a budget to it. I mean, I could, I'm, I'm sure.
I don't think we want to do that.
And then, then the telephone, they have a telephone expense too?
I mean, if we could put it in there, we, I, that's just budgeted in each one, so that's how I go down those line items.
What is, what is this for?
Now health.
So who, what does that person do?
That was, that's Mike Arnt, he does, he did a hundred and twenty commitments last year.
Okay.
Did we get it, I know on the provision commission, we got some information from him on, on what he's been up to, did we all get that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we all did too, didn't we, so?
I'll second it. I got a plus five hundred.
And the five hundred.
Oh, okay.
Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, opposed.
Plus five hundred, plus five hundred, I need you to pass number.
Okay, item.
Is this something that could come out of the mental health fund?
I know we've talked about that before.
I do not believe.
She's saying no.
Juveniles.
How'd he say no?
Um, that's, um, teen court, page twenty-five. Give us a report on that, uh, Mark, what's, what's going on with that?
Um, there's been some changes in teen court, uh, towards the end, um, the state has requested that all juveniles that are arrested now has to, have to be seen, so Steve is also working in, in.
What do you mean they have to be seen?
Uh, in the past, someone gets arrested on a minor offense, they would just send them a letter, say you need to go to this diversion program.
But we didn't start that though, I don't believe, I mean, that started in the, uh, juvenile.
That's with the state of Iowa, with juvenile court services, yes.
Probation, yeah.
They're saying now that the state's requ, is requiring that all juveniles with an arrest have to be seen.
How it used to be?
Personally, yes, yes. Um, and so Steve is working with, uh, juvenile court services, um, working with them to go through the, go through the, um, referrals, uh, spec, to deal with diversionary programs. And then he's on a committee or a panel that work with juvenile court services and youth to develop the teen court and to also work as a diversionary, um, part of the program to also look at what other programs that they can go to.
Who's on that panel?
I know there's two juvenile court services persons, I don't know who they are right now, it's, I believe, I don't, I don't want to tell names because I don't know for sure. And then I know they've been working with, um, Linda Phillips, they've talked to her about some of the youth, so once we get youth, then we can start, um, processing them in on a regular basis, but we, we're looking for youth right now.
Is Marilyn charging on that committee?
No, she isn't, we can sure ask her to be though.
Oh, okay.
So I'm trying to understand what you just told me, so teen court really has moved to the state, what, is funding it?
No, no.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Juvenile court services is, is required now to see any juvenile that's been arrested, okay? In the past, they would send out letters and say, here's your diversion, okay? Teen court, um, now is, has partnered with juvenile court services to start working as a diversionary program with that individual to look at them, determine who would go to teen court, he's involved in that decision-making, or they may go to another type of diversion. Then the ones that are siphoned off the teen court, then we are developing a teen panel to look at what consequences that individual may be, um, having.
So the job is changing somewhat, is that what you're telling me, the scope is being expanded?
It's expanding, yeah, it's expanding. Because right now, we'll be able to, in the past, we were having trouble getting referrals, and now with juvenile court services, we're gonna be getting a lot of delinquent referrals, and then, uh, um, so that, the, um, the amount of kids that we'll be seeing is a lot more.
Okay.
Does it still go through Sulan cares?
It'll go with juvenile court services. Linda has been involved in some of the community.
I think the big change though is that these youngsters will no longer get letters from juvenile probation that they have violated, but they have to be seen by a probation officer or, and you're, and you're, and you're standing.
And then find out, and these would be for.
That's the big change.
These would be for youth that are not going to court, that's the whole, uh, thing, let's keep them out of the court system and process them by a diversionary program.
Right.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
How many people did we actually have go through teen court the last year?
Oh. Last year, you said?
Sure. Or last month, or something? Maybe ten, okay.
And that'll probably be boosted up too, you know, with, with, uh, if you're gonna have several, at least about referrals coming through juvenile court services, um, with Steve, and then converting them into different diversionary programs, which would also be getting more delinquent referrals, which we have, and we get to pass, those numbers would definitely go up.
Did we use to partner with teen court on Dakota?
Yes.
We used to, are we still doing that?
No, we used to, now we are specifically because of working with Woodbury County.
Woodbury County.
Services, they're just specifically within that, you know, part of the program.
Part of the situation is, like I said, James, has been the prior policy of, of juvenile probation and sending those letters out to the parents when a youngster, uh, made a minor misdemeanor violation. Uh, the state now requires, as they used to, that, that a probation officer has to see that youngster, you know, and, and make a recommendation either to, uh, the juvenile referee or to teen court, how that youngster is gonna be.
Yes.
Disposed of.
Teen court more often, right?
Yeah, you're gonna.
So, is this enough money for, uh?
I don't know, I don't, I don't want to increase it yet.
You know, um, this is pretty close to, I think, what we can do, but once we get a better idea of the number of kids coming in and the amount of work this is gonna do, then I can.
Is there any response, since we're not sharing with the county?
No, there won't be. No. Because referrals will still be coming through juvenile court services, so it'll be an outside agency referring juvenile, uh, so I don't wish you any special cost.
I have one question.
Okay.
Employing hospitalization, why is that fifteen thousand seven hundred and eight now when it's been down five, six, and only four this year?
Well, from a single to a family, maybe?
From a single person, I think, to a family person.
We know this for sure.
Um, this is for sure, and that's what's coming around off our table.
Okay. That's why the budget went up so high.
Any other questions by the board on this, if we have a motion to receive it?
What?
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Same sign. Uh, GPS tracker, page twenty-six.
Where's the other half of this person?
That's all we have, is just a half.
Just a half.
It's not something, ain't another budget?
No, this is it. This program is just going, going crazy. Um, he is working, and I think that's one of the reasons our numbers are down, is that juvenile court services are putting, using, uh, Luis to do a lot more house arrest supervision, he's mentoring, he's, uh, you know, kids on their bracelet, um, so they're able to use an alternative resource than only holding kids in detention either initially for any length of time, they use it both ways, instead of putting kids in detention, they'll put them on the bracelet to see how well they'll do, or if they're in detention, they'll put them on the bracelet to try to get them out as quickly as possible.
When we originally set this up, are you using your other staff members to help him?
They, what they will do is help on the initial part, do they go out, no, because they're not GPS, they're not hired to do GPS tracking, but.
Okay.
I think this is a, really a tremendous program because in working with, uh, and with, I think Mark can, can, can help me with this, with Casey Foundation, the juvenile, uh, judicial system through, uh, um, oh, I can't even think of the judge's name, but he's, uh, we have been able to reduce the number of, of youngsters in our detention center. I mean, the studies have been made though, if, when we arrest, uh, youngsters and they have to spend time in our cells, that increases their chances substantially in coming back to the system. The, the, we keep these youngsters out of the system by having these bracelets on them, and, uh, that's, again, is part of the reason that, uh, we don't have our local youngsters filling up our, our detention centers because of the GPS, uh, program that we have here.
And in the past, we've never really had an alternative program for juvenile court services, so now they can use this, so instead of, like I said, holding kids for any length of time, they attempt to put the child on the bracelet, and if they violate, then they come back, of course. Or prior to bring him in detention, let's say, let's slap a bracelet on, see how well he does, if he can't make it, we can always bring him in, but let's attempt to keep him out of detention.
And his bracelet system has, has improved, uh, physically substantially.
It's amazing.
They used to take those bracelets off, now they cannot do it without.
It's, it's amazing what it can do.
Absolutely, they are amazing.
Forty-one thirty, employee mileage, nothing in twelve, two seventy-five and.
He just hasn't turned. I'll tell you what, why I'm doing that, Mark, is that, um, this gentleman does, the majority, by far the majority of his, his duties are on the road, going to different places, meeting with them, um, so he's, you know, he's got Woodbury County, so he's meeting with all the families, he's meeting with different juvenile court officers, not in, not local, and so he is on the road quite a bit. I mean, that's the majority of his job.
Hasn't he turned in mileage?
No, I, no, he hasn't.
That, that was my concern, you got somebody out there that's spending his money and not being reimbursed, so you, you gotta get that straight.
Yeah, I keep saying outlet, yeah, I know.
Move to receive.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Till next year.
Let's see here. Mental health, services?
That's it.
I think that's it for you.
I'm done.
Um. This is under, where's mental health services, what tab is that under, mental health?
Mental health.
In mental health, actually, two fronts now, we have county services, and we split case management out into a separate fund, so, so that's a hundred percent pretty much reimbursed, so we just want to separate it.
Where's Patty?
Patty was right here.
She had to go out and get Jim. Jim just walked out or something, I don't know.
This one we basically back into, the national leverage is three million five or some thousand, we'll reduce it by three oh-nine, and increase channels up to bill up, one-time cash reserve for case management, next year we'll go back to three and a half, this does not affect our equalization. So basically it's back into it.
The only, Denny, have you gotten, the only, the only caveat I have there is, you know, out of that definition that Julie Jettner sent to us yesterday from DHS was, we have to make sure that we are not under the base year, so, you know, the base year expenditure was determined in nineteen ninety-four, I believe, so I've asked her to check that and get back to me on it, because I don't, I don't remember what we spent in nineteen ninety-four.
You got that, Denny?
No. Well, we had to record that with DHS, so I don't know that anybody here is gonna have that number.
Yeah, and when she looks at case, that day, she's gotta remember case management wasn't embedded in those expenses, so I hope she splits them.
No, case management wasn't embedded.
Uh, in this budgeting, I defy you to come up with anything illogical to it because we back into it, and, I hate to say it, but I gotta put all my faith in Patty, because otherwise, I'm gonna have to do it, so.
Well, and this year with the regionalization and everything, um, you know, I, I worked real close with Denny on this, on equalization dollars, the revenue streams, um, and we did budget, this, this budget includes the budgeting of our equalization dollars, okay, so that we will be using them throughout the year. Going into the regional concept, um, you know, there's some priorities that have been somewhat agreed to by that region now. you know, there's some priorities that have been somewhat agreed to by that region now. Are they written in, have they been voted on? Sorry.
Patty, I saw that everybody got a copy of where we're at so far.
Yeah, I got it.
You know, it, I've always felt comfortable working with those three other counties, and I think we're going to progress fine and be able to look at some additional programs, maybe development of new programs. Those are also incorporated in here because we have the equalization. Again, with the regional concept, all four CPCs, like everything now on the table, the programs we're doing, everybody who's remaining, able to be status quo, okay? With what we've been doing and the programs we've served. We were able to increase a little bit to the Center for Guardian, not Guardianship, for Conservator, because they do such a tremendous job on the financial aspect of budgeting and making sure that our people's rent, groceries, utilities, those items are taken and paid for so that they're not accused to the teeth and maybe somebody will take their money. Been an invaluable service over the years. The other area was, we increased a little bit to ARC, who provides that summer school program so that the kids don't regress during the summers. So they've got six to eight weeks of real active plan programming going on there that keeps them involved during the summer months, so. Other than that, we remain pretty much status quo. We do have some residential increases because of involuntary commitments. We'll deal with them and see where we have to go with those. But for the time being, you know, it's a lot of changes and we're just trying to do the best we can and really improve, because that was the constant behind it.
Patty, we really haven't gotten any definite direction from our state legislatures on this regionalization, have we? I mean, I mean, there's DHS, whatever. I mean, it's come out with no rules of definiti as far as how it's going to work. I mean, we're just going through the motions now, meeting with the, with the, with the regional areas, I mean, the other counties.
They have finally gotten out, we do have all the administrative rules that we need to comply with, okay? So we'll be doing that regional management plan and submitting that to the department for their approval and we'll meet all of our administrative rules. The one, DHS did not include the equalization on for fiscal year fifteen. They did not include it in their budget during the governor's-
How much would that amount to?
I think that was like the thirty million dollars from state. And the governor put it back in and said, yes, it will remain. So he included it in his budget. With direct, direct direction to DHS that it was to be for the equalization and on these three.
What does that have to do with the forty-seven dollar some amount?
That is the forty-seven.
Is that the forty, is it? Okay.
So that part has all been taken care of. Now, a major shift for DHS has been the implementation of the Affordable Care Act, the individual health homes. You know, they, they do have a lot on their plate, I'll give them that, but we're going to submit what we think is in the budget for counties within the, within the information we've been providing and, you know, what we feel is, you know, the intent of the legislation.
Okay, good, alright.
And we did look at a preliminary management plan, I know all the attachments, we did not look at, I think you guys have them, but they weren't ready for us to review. So the CBCs are in the process of, of coming up with the management plan. We, as a region, our assignment was to go and kind of read that management plan that we were given, come up with any questions, take it back, and then at some point in time, it'll, it'll come back to the boards, too. So it has to be vetted through several different people in the process.
That has to be completely submitted to DHS by April one of this year. And then we are to be totally operational July one of this year.
But are we, we're still going to have a, a management plan or a meeting with the consumers?
Yes, as soon as the management plan is done, the law no longer requires any public, any public hearings, anything like that to be done with the plan, but everybody in the four counties is kind of getting involved. We will take it out. Yeah. Yeah, we will take it out and we will, yeah, we will host a public meeting in each of the four counties and publicize it, so our providers, our families, our individuals can attend.
Be in the next four to six weeks, probably, right?
And we used to always use that here, we, you know, the majority of you folks came, supervisors came, and we would have anywhere from thirty to sixty persons there, and that's how we determined what our priorities were going to be in the county. People just got it.
Boy, you're getting old.
So that's, that's really where we're at.
I've got some questions, page fifteen. Safe schools, I understand. MH Courts, Compass, I understand, what's the community support program? It's thirty-nine sixty-two.
The dollar amount?
Five hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred.
That is, I'm going to, that is part of the contract we have with Sulan Health for Community Support Services.
Okay.
As was the Friendship House may possibly be in there.
I've got another one. Page nineteen. Five hundred and ten thousand, six hundred, no, five hundred and ten thousand.
My numbers aren't matching up with yours, I think ten thousand dollars on page nineteen.
Uh, no, it's community based, beds.
Oh, okay, is it, is it at an RCF facility?
It just says-
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it's an RCF, so any of those individuals that are in RCF facilities who still have to continue to pay for them, especially, and they become ours, okay?
How many do we have left?
Oh, jeez, we've got a bunch of folks left in residential care.
Okay, page thirty-five.
That's alright.
Purchase administration rehabilitated treatment, State Mental Health Institute, are we not going to use them?
Not the purchase administration, the inpatient hospital of twenty-six, eight, seven, five. All of the forty-ones have been deleted. That was the other thing, one of the major changes, we used to have the four-zero, four-one, four-two, and four-three. All of the four-ones were deleted by the Department of Human Services for accounting.
Okay, alright.
So we're into four-zero now.
Alright. That's it.
Just so I can be happy, I need to be happy these days. Yeah, I, I appreciate it. Included in the budget will be continuation of French House, Mental Health Court, Safe Schools. That is absolutely fantastic, thank you.
Do you want to give us your good news or not?
Well, no, as I said, I keep delaying my turn. I want to stay on the ride as long as Mr. Paul.
James has a question.
I've got three things. One, I think the last regional meeting we had, that all the counties in the region agree to have twenty-five percent reserved, that's what we have in budget. In case management and mental health services. Second question, I'm calling. We're budgeting all the equalization in our budget, but there potentially could pull potential eighty percent of that money back, which in case, we won't have money available to spend. Am I right in there, Patty?
Why would they make potential?
Well, not this year.
I, I think-
Not this fiscal year, but it would be up to just under fifteen. So any of the equalization on our budget to spend in fifteen would then not be in the overall program, et cetera, and back to state file.
Because legislative reasons?
They, yeah, they, they put it in there, any savings that the legislature attained for the taxpayers through this equalization would be shared with the taxpayers, and therefore they would take it back. And what they do with the money when they take it back, up to eighty percent.
Can't get a separate out mental health, that program. That's the way it was written, George, it doesn't make any sense.
You know what problems are, we're budgeting, I'd say it's one point two million budgeted, if they come back to take it back, we're going to write a check, because that cuts the numbers that we budgeted down by whatever we write to check. Because you can't count all one point two million that we're budgeting, if they're going to take eighty percent of it back, where are you going to write the check from?
I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that that would come out of the following year's budget.
So then you're going to budget eight hundred dollars less?
The following year, you would have to budget less that money.
Well, you know, what we got paid this year was one point two, okay? If they make us pay back eighty percent, that's going to be paid back out of F one fifteen, okay?
Which is our next budget.
Right, which is budgeted in here, the one point two eight is in here.
Right.
If they, we'll know by the end of May or when the legislature goes out of session, we'll know whether or not we have to pay back that eighty percent of one dollar amount is. We will have to amend the line items and we will have to take that money out of the two budget areas and pay it back then. And those programs won't be able to expand to that.
Because once I heard they're going to hold the money before they send us equalization, at one point. But what Patty's saying, too, is that we're after a word about writing a check, because if we get all the money, we'll just refund, if it's eight hundred thousand, we'll amend the budget and reduce the Spanish quarter.
And we'll know that before we go forward in that fiscal year, so when we start the program, we will have the amount of dollars that we would have to commit to it by having to pay.
The last question is, have they picked the fiscal age for reading that? I'm just still a-
No, we have not, but we sort of did throw our name and you weren't there, so we did volunteer, but also Plymouth may be interested, was it Plymouth, Larry? One of the other counties. So they may be interested, too, and so we just-
We volunteered, you, Mr. Butler.
No, you volunteered, you did volunteer, did you?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
You should, okay.
And the Sioux, and the Sioux County supervisors, when they said, will Dennis Butler be doing this? And we said, well, he'll be helping, and they said, oh, good.
James.
Yeah, um, which page are you budgeting your operations of the tri- building, you know, budget, janitorial stuff?
They included that in that forty-five, really, James?
You're talking, you're talking to forty-five numbers?
Yeah.
Do you know what page it is on, this is easier.
No, because my numbers that I prepared don't even match.
Forty-five, well-
Should be at the, really should be very good.
Forty-five is actually blank, because I think that was mental retirement, rehabilitation, treatment. It's, it's somewhere else in here. Natural costs to do all the construction, not with money we have on hand right now.
Yeah, I'm not stopping here after the county did.
Yes.
I was wondering if it was page sixty-one, maybe, is that, there's numbers in there, but I don't know, is that for that level or something?
That's-
That's going to be on the, okay, and key.
Yeah, okay, so that's something else.
This would be, yeah, this would be down there.
It'll be sixty and sixty-one, because that's our tax two pages, page sixteen, sixty-one, I think, Patty, general administration.
Yes.
So this is where your operations budget is going to come from, exactly?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. And you're not making any changes of enrollment related to it compared to the, because you don't know what cost we're going to do? You don't know what all of your cost would be for operating that building, so you're not going to make any changes to your line items, right?
No, not yet, because we have a new HDAC system coming in, and we're currently paying to keep it heated, keep it in a condition, because we don't have a choice.
So those numbers are in the hour?
Pretty much. I mean, it's one system that we can't shuffle or anything off, so.
You have a motion to receive this, Patty?
Move to receive it.
Second.
Further discussion, those in favor of the same aye?
Aye.
Just a further point on this, that the end of page sixty-five, the end of all the pages, those four point two-two million, is that the total budget for mental health after the county?
By the way, I have a simple question, but you can get that. Four point two-two-five. Because we did split out case management as reversible, we put that in a separate fund.
That's my question, how much is going to the regional entity and how much is staying in the county? Is that, is that the way to break it down essentially?
I would say at this point in time, it's all stayed with the county. We haven't regen, we haven't pooled our money yet until there's a purpose or a goal, and then we decided then we will pool it.
I think it's already interrupted, just to make sure I understand. The page sixty-five, the full budget for all the pages from seven to sixty-five, four point two-two?
Correct.
Five million budget?
Correct.
I already cut some of that out, right?
No.
That's, that's a budget where you-
Right.
Same as the engineers, but like they're going to track, like blood figures.
Moving on to non-county social services agency, that's just regular, just basic, and
On all these budgets here, we do have financial statements which are requested from each provider asking for money. You have not copied all of them in your package, because of the amount of a lot of pages. They are available for review in the board office. And this, and it said something here, too, I did not use Riverboat Funds yet, I'll set these expenditures here, amounts about seventy-four, seventy-five thousand.
It's seventy-five, two ninety-five.
Okay, normally we'd use Riverboat Funds, but that's a redecision, maybe next week we'll have to talk about when we start clear how we're going to balance this all out. But right now it is not used, so we used it last year, we didn't use it for the new year coming up, which means that's far about two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars increase in revenues, spending of revenues. Do we have any revenue yet?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't see us making any changes in this, I'd like to receive those budgets, all of them, at the same as last year unless there's somebody wants to change them.
Well, we're-
Well, that's what I'm saying.
Now you have the number.
There's a second to that?
Second.
I just want to state something before we move on on these budgets. I understand these are crucial to the county, but eventually, you know, we're going to have to start cutting somewhere, and eventually it might be these. So that was the same complaint I had last year, is, you know, we don't, you know, we're always talking that we don't want to spend money, tax dollars, on, on things that we don't really have control over, and I think these are five or six areas that, you know, eventually we may have to think about cutting.
That's probably why we've used Riverboat Funds, so non-ta, that's the non-tax dollars to, to fund them, so that may play into our decision-making next, next week.
I hope so, because we've got to cut the budget somewhere.
Okay, any other questions? Those in favor of the motion to say aye?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, first, non-mandated supplemental. I will, I discuss this now, come back in a little later.
So what, twenty-seven, General, so what this is, this is money that the board allocates to juvenile prevention, et cetera.
Commissioned that-
Commissioned to decide where this money is spent. Currently it is basically being spent at the San Francisco. Now that decision has to be made by, you're, you're committed there, board, to where it will be, for now, that's where it's going, right now.
Okay, so refresh me on these, the text, is that books they buy, or? The text?
No, this is outreach in the schools.
Okay, but what is the text amount?
Well, the text is just to say where the money's been going currently. Their commission has gave to San Francisco all the money because of what they do according to communities. They have to present their case to that committee, our duty is allocating seven thousand dollars for this committee to disperse. That's up to the committee.
And there are two members of the commission come and go through the claims when they're submitted.
Are you on that committee now?
I'm on that committee, I don't review the claims. Two of the other members do that.
And documentation on those claims are about two to three inches thick. They're very well documented.
I know that, the commission was something Supervisor Monson had originally, um, started, and now I was assigned to it last year, so I guess I'm kind of the new one, but the, I will say the members on the commission, they are passionate about continuing to give the money to the Sanford Center, they, and Mark, you would know this too, because you were sitting on it that time, evidently listened to a lot of different groups come in and, and present information about their programs, and while they thought many of the programs are very good, they thought the documentation and, um, the bang for the buck was the best with the Sanford Center, they just thought that was a very good use of the money, and it reached, uh, more of the children. I was pretty hard on them, really, just to be, because I wanted them to be ready to answer and justify, and, and they based it with, uh, data, they just said it's data-driven, and, and they're comfortable with it, so...
There's no other centers like that here in Sioux City.
Well, there are... Well, I can tell you what outreach workers do, just because I worked in the schools, so I have, um, for instance, they would be a go-between, between parents, and maybe the principal, parents, and the teacher, they'll go out and, and get kids, sometimes bring them to school, they'll make contact if the kid is, or student is having difficulty, and believe you me, I, it seems like, why can't somebody do that at school? These people, they just can operate under a different, um, hat, and they can make contacts with the school cat, and they really can help those families and students, and it helps students achieve it in the end.
Isn't, I think the school does have a contract with Sanford Center, so is this supplementing that contract?
I think it is, they, they might have a contract with their suspension, because they do suspend kids there too.
Yeah, I'd have to.
Yeah.
We've always just used a flat amount that, uh, well, Mark, you're more familiar with this than any of us, uh, that used to go to DHS to disperse, and... Actually went through General Court Services. Yeah. I had, down here, uh, it's just, are we behind on the payments, or are they behind on the billings?
Well, one reason we changed from general court services, when Jerry now's doing it, the, the payments were coming in two, three, four months delayed, basically, they're pretty much approved, this, we're returning over this, the way we're doing it now, they submit a bill, and they're paid the next month, so there's no gap in receiving the funds, you got all boils back down to the Board, that's due not prevention, determine where the money goes. All the Board is doing is giving them an allocation to disperse, but it is now a more aggressive reimbursing, instead of wait two or three months, 'cause a lot of these agencies, including Sanford Center, the others, turn time strings.
Yeah.
And they can't wait two or three or four months for the money, it's tight, and that's true with all the agencies, right?
All right, motion to approve.
Second.
Is this gonna be Riverboat Funds later?
No, this is...
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. With Guidance Services, General Supplemental, page nineteen. I'm guessing that's state institutions we're putting, kids in?
Okay, you nineteen, yes, I introduced this a little bit, one area increased another area by comparing what's being spent, the first one is Toledo, now, did I hear they're closing Toledo?
I, they closed Toledo already.
So, I'm curious where the children now are going?
Well, I do believe they can go to Sioux Falls.
Okay, so we're still sending them out, we aren't bringing them back over to households?
But if we ever, you know, if this facility ever gets built, that they're building now, that's gonna help offset a lot of this cost.
So what's the daycare?
What?
Daycare.
That is, Mr. Parks, Chris, over at work, report on the place.
Move to receive.
I'd second it.
Any further discussion?
Just hope it's enough, just hope it's enough.
Yep.
With Toledo being closed.
Say aye?
Aye.
Secondary roads?
He walked out.
That's his...
We're back into this one too, 'cause you have a lot of, you have to do, and he presents his cap to group and plan to do this stuff, but there's a lot of expenses.
What secondary road under, it got its own, okay.
Yeah, it's got its own cap.
Okay.
Is that coming out of rural basic?
I don't know, has its own cap, um, it'll be passed rural basis again. Secondary roads, he has some done, also, we're gonna be in the second year, our one point three million dollars for a bridge, we do have a separate fund, but on his reports, he combines them, for county purposes, we're keeping that investment bridge project, only separate, so payment of loss, and we got the income, and we got the expenses.
So that's on page, page eight is the bridges.
This year, in the, uh, in the interests of full disclosure, um, we are above the minimum, um, this year, I held the property tax levy where it was last year, but we are seeing growth in your local option sales tax fund, and we're budgeting for about three hundred thousand dollars in growth, so that's putting me three hundred thousand above that minimum now.
Does the...
What does that mean for?
Well, we have to make at least seventy-five percent of our allowable levy under the rural basic and the general basic, I always calculate what that is, and then I add about one percent, just in case we have a shortfall in revenues, uh, non-payment of taxes, whatever it happens to be, if we have extra money in the local option sales tax, we do, uh, get a little more than that seventy-six percent that we budget, but our, our property tax transfer is limited to whatever figure you set. Now, this year, with the, um, growth in the local option sales tax, we're a little closer to about eighty percent of what the allowable maximum levy is. So there's probably, I'd have to recalculate it to be sure, but there, there could be up to maybe two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty thousand that's, that could be rolled back to get us at that seventy-six percent, if the Board needed to do that now. We haven't had any growth, you can, if you look at our low, our road use tax fund revenues, um, and, uh, our time twenty-one revenues, those have been pretty well static, and this goes back to about fiscal year two thousand nine. Um, we saw a little bit of growth initially as, uh, time twenty-one was kicking in between oh-nine and eleven, but from twelve, thirteen, fourteen, it's pretty much running the, the same amount of money. Um, the way that we're budgeted right now, utilizing that extra revenue in local option sales tax, is we're reinforcing and trying to get back up to our gravel quantity, um, we're coming back closer to where our new equipment budget was under Richard Storm, um, we had about four years where that was an area where we reduced some of our expenditures, and we've also reduced over three hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year in, in, uh, wages by dropping one man per district, and then dropping the, uh, maintenance manager out of the administrative staff, so, you know, we, we are, this is the first year you've seen me turn in a budget where I allowed that local option sales tax and didn't roll it back, but we were able to keep our property tax levy, our total property tax taking is the same as it was for fiscal year fourteen, the levy is actually lower by a nickel. Uh, it went from one oh-six to about one, roughly, with, with some roundup on it, um, I'd like to keep that, but again, I understand you guys are...
Well, you know, I, I think we probably better keep this budget from us, because I think we've got additional work that we're doing, particularly south leader on the roads for CF Industries, uh, and I know, you know, the amount of traffic down there, and we intended to meet last week that they can, it's, uh, I'm not sure that we can keep up with, with, uh, maintenance up at that road, and those funds can be used for some of the additional expense, I think, that you're gonna encounter.
But it, it does help out with that area, because gravel is one of the big expenditures down in, in keeping that road up.
And, well, you know, those trucks, I don't know how much it weighs, but there's gonna be a lot of them.
Well, they're, the semi-loads are eighty to a hundred and ten thousand pounds, we have the special South Dakota, um, trains, they call them, that are being allowed to haul down there, and, um, the ready-mix trucks, uh, ten yards of ready-mix, they're running almost as heavy as a semi, I think they're about seventy-two thousand pounds, so, I mean, we're seeing some very heavy loads running up and down that area.
It's not tax, it's not money we're taxing for, it's that lost money, that's where our growth is, is in the local option sales tax, yes.
And one nice thing in the current fiscal year, we're realizing increasing the sales tax also, that is not budgeted currently in this budget, and I got options there, to dedicate to the roads by CF, and move up a bridge project, if they're in line, and you're gonna make a determined call with the Board, where you want to do with this extra money.
Well, when we amend this spring, that's what I'll be requesting, is to bolster that gravel budget in our dust control budget, which are the areas where we're improving that road and doing stabilization, that's, that's where we're looking at spending. But as, as far as the, that growth in local option sales tax, again, the biggest concentrations are in new equipment, which you probably noticed went up, um, gravel, which went up, um, and, uh, we also put some, or I also put some money into buildings, um, we have a couple of buildings, our Correctionville Shed is in need of attending issues with insulation and roof leaks, and then, uh, the Movel Shed, the old building that we chose not to tear down and replace when we bought our new facility, um, there's a, there's a company, uh, SCI, that's been doing work with restoring those galvanized buildings, they've been doing a lot of grain bins, uh, they also do the, uh, blown insul, exterior insulation and sealing on the roof, um, I was looking at doing a project like that with that Movel Shed to extend its life further.
How much propane do you use?
Uh, we use about thirty-five thousand gallons a year, and I'm very thankful that we have contracted a dollar five. Uh, I, I, you know, I was noticing we had an increase of, uh, let's see, we went from eighty-nine cents to a dollar five, uh, and I was, uh, a little distressed with that, but it's looking real good now, compared to what most folks are having.
Well, look out when the contract runs out.
Yeah, well, it doesn't run out until we start our next contract next year, so, yeah, I, I didn't budget a lot of growth in heating, so we'll have to see where we're at next year.
Any other concerns on this budget?
Moved to receive.
Second.
Question, uh, so far, your snow removal budget has been very good this year.
Yes.
Uh, where do you plan on implementing those extra revenues?
Much of what's perceived as revenue on our snow removal budget is in the area of wages, a lot of our guys max out thirty-five hours of compensatory time when they're pushing snow, um, we haven't, uh, that, that ends up netting out, because they use that in place of vacation, and they use that as time off, so, uh, what we save can help offset some of those costs on CF Hall Roads, um, it, it isn't going to be a huge, huge savings, most of our work on the gravel roads is during, done, done during normal operating hours, uh, we usually accumulate less than three hours a day until they're actually open, and then we only operate in normal hours, um, you know, we're out with the first snow plate on the pavements, and, uh, we've seen enough little ice storms, snow storms, we're not running that far behind, even though it hasn't been a great deal of accumulation, um, we still have to make those runs on the pavements, and, uh, on the weekends, and on other times, I think we've had one holiday where we've been out so far. There will be some savings, and again, those will offset within those road maintenance items, and maybe allow us not to make this big impact on dust control and such.
Just one short statement though, so the public, these roads down CF, right now, they're running through that, I mean, about a hundred and ninety employees here and there, they're running, uh, used to run over five hundred trucks, that's gonna go from a hundred and ninety employees to close to two thousand using these roads, and the trucks gonna double or triple, so it's gonna be tremendous pressure on these roads, and God knows how much it's gonna cost to maintain. Do you keep a person down there and a piece of equipment down there a lot?
Um, early this fall, we were, but now the things are frozen, we don't have a lot of, uh, opportunity to work with that area, one thing that we're preparing to do this spring is, uh, we had to leave the, uh, forest slopes and ditch bottoms in fairly rough condition, uh, we'll be running a little, uh, D-three size dozer to go in and finish those areas, and then we can get them reseeded and get them in a little better shape, um, we're also going to be trying to restore some of the crown that the trucks have beaten out of it, you know, we're, we're fairly, we're fairly steep right now, much steeper than we had it initially, and a lot of that's those heavy loads on that outside edge, um, we're gonna be trying to bring those areas up with gravel when we rework that road this spring. Um, something to think about is, I'm not planning on reworking that road just immediately as the frost starts to go out, because right now, we've got a good solid crust that will shed water, and I would rather have it a little bit rough, but shedding water, than have it completely open and allow water to penetrate and soften up that base and, and make it, uh, non-navigable for them.
And it's gonna dump traffic a little bit too, it's a little...
Well, that is, that is a benefit, but the folks, the folks who see that benefit also have to drive those roads, and, and they confess they would like to see them just a little bit smoother too, so, we do understand that, and...
Yeah, we have a motion, and a second, let me see, for the discussion, those who favor and against the same, aye?
Aye.
Close, same sign, uh, secondary roads under the roadside management, uh, that's under rural basic?
I, I did ask for a little extra money this year for herbicide, um, we have a, a very enthusiastic employee, as you all know, who is really getting around and, and making some big differences in the territory. Uh, we supplement his herbicides with the brush spray chemicals that he applies on behalf of our department, most of that work is done after the noxious weeds that are his primary mission, his weed commissioner are, are taking care of. Um, I did ask for about a three thousand dollar increase in his, uh, budget for herbicides this year, he, he's using some proj, pro, um, products that are more environmentally friendly, you use ounces per acre as opposed to gallons per acre in the tank mix, um, but they are a little more expensive, but the results that he's getting, and the, uh, the, the good knockdown and, and actual kills on thistles and some of the spurge and the difficult weeds, uh...
And they're more biotic degree, what do you mean, I mean, they're better on the environment?
Well, one of the things is, they don't volatilize as much as a, uh, two-four-D, um, that means that it'll, it'll evapor, it'll evaporate and it'll spread on the wind, so you get wind drift, um...
It kills everything that's not supposed to kill.
Right, um, these pretty much spray and stick, they don't tend to evaporate, they don't have as much wind drift, um, they, they go where, where the nozzles direct them, and, uh, uh, two-four-D is one that, that gets into a bit of a mist, and it can't carry, uh, we still use that in areas, because it is an effective herbicide, but, but these others don't come along with some of those same problems, uh, Streamline is one of these videos in particular, and he also looks at whether he's near water or not, and, uh, some of these allow you to apply up to water's edge, because they don't have that issue of volatilizing and drifting.
So you gotta use two-four-D less than now?
We're using it less, and, uh, we're using other chemicals, again, that are more effective and that don't...
Is that what you're, you're pleased about, sorry, with the chemical?
Um, that and his productivity being very, uh, very good, he gets out and, uh, yeah, um, one of the things that I've done with him, and one of the good things about him being a wage plan employee as opposed to union, I can give him flexible hours in his starting times, there are some mornings where he starts at five AM, because it's calm, the, the situation is good for spraying, and by noon, he's done, when winds start to come up, and, and he starts to have problems that affect him, so, um, he's been, he's been, uh, an asset to your, uh...
He's there with eradication for...
Yeah, I've, I've got a number of compliments on that.
He's, he's very good.
He, he's also very good with the folks he has to serve notice on, I, I swear he knows everybody, I mean, once you get out of town, uh, there's very few people that, uh, that he doesn't know, that's one of the great things about having a, a local uh, who does this job and is, is conscientious about it, so...
Move to receive.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those are the papers, you can say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Howard.
Thank you.
Move to break for lunch? You got one more then?
No, we don't.
Where did you see that?
Where's that at?
No, that's after lunch.
That's where at the end.
I have two different schedules there. Do you want to jam a time frame?
Do you have a time? Yeah, we'll be back at one.
One?
We'll have forty-five minutes, break.
Yes.
Are you going to bring us lunch back?
Yes, I am. Right out of here, I'll give you whatever you want. Get started, or?
That was Josh.
I thought you were serious.
No, I just wanted to walk.
That's why I overdid it.